Oh, no, that's mine.
That's.
I did bring my own. I got one. I'm good. Okay. First, I apologize for the late start. They're having trouble with Zoom. So Zoom is now working, so we can open up the hearing. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. I will tell you how the hearing is going to proceed. And I have to give you a notice first. This hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law. Please be advised that the meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable, on Facebook Live, and on Zoom. And public access Facebook page, and will be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. To participate remotely from a computer, go to the Zoom meeting, and the computer app users will be able to use the raise hand feature to request to speak. I'd like to introduce you to the board at this time. To my left is Adam Coste, Town Council, Lisa Normandin, the Board Secretary, I'm Alfred Gravel, James Bedzekowski, and Swentrop, David Blatt, Patrick Callahan, Tony Nacastro, and Don Gurney. The way the hearing will proceed, this is a continuation on a 40B comprehensive permit known as Pondview Commons for the purpose of developing a 200-unit apartment community at 318, 390, and 400 Howard Street. The reason for this hearing tonight is we were at an impasse over monies to be paid to peer reviewers, and so we had a legal question concerning the water in the sewer commissioners and in the board. So we made a request to have hack or impasse. We need to come up with a solution. So that's what we're going to discuss and talk about tonight. At the last hearing, the board took a straw boat on the zoning board's authority to act on behalf of the water and sewer commissioners to expand the district. And based on that, that's why we're here tonight. We decided we would continue it to tonight and let Town Council and the applicants' council see what they could come up to resolve the issue. And so I think with that, I would ask Adam Coste, the attorney, to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I appreciate that introduction and that recap as to what's occurred thus far. So I have two documents that have been prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. I'm going to provide, I have multiple copies here, although as I count them, I think I may be a couple of shorts, so I may ask a couple of you to share a copy. But I brought a number of copies of two documents. The first is a stipulation, which is what we had discussed two weeks ago at your last session of the public hearing. The stipulation is a document that I negotiated. I drafted it initially, sent it to Attorney Bornstein. He had a few edits to it. We discussed those edits, incorporated those edits for the most part. And so it's a document that has now been negotiated. It's acceptable to me. It's acceptable to him. He confirmed that to me in writing in an email late today. And it really is meant to summarize what was just stated by the chairman in terms of process and procedure, and then to memorialize the process that we had discussed at the last session of the public hearing. And just as a reminder of that process, both for your benefit and for the public's benefit, the process really entails a postponement or a stay of these proceedings, a suspension is probably a better word, of these proceedings while we proceed to the Housing Appeals Committee, or HAC. And the Housing Appeals Committee will have an opportunity to review two issues. One is water, the other is sewer. We've discussed both of those issues extensively through the course of the public hearing thus far. The question being whether this board has the authority to act on behalf of water district voters to expand the boundaries of the water district so as to allow for the provision of water service to the project site. And with regard to sewer, similarly, whether this board has the authority to act on behalf of town meetinggoers to expand the sewer service area to allow for the provision of sewer service to the project site. We discussed those at your last session of the public hearing. As the chairman said, there was a straw poll, and the consensus on the board was that the board felt it did not have that authority, having heard the arguments, the advice I've provided, arguments from council, as well as arguments that have been submitted in writing by both the sewer commission and the water district and the water district's independent legal counsel. So the stipulation sets forth that background and provides a process for that appeal to be taken to the HAC and beyond. In the event that the HAC renders a determination that is not satisfactory to the board, the board has the ability to continue to litigate that, of course, with select board's approval through the courts, however, you know, however long that may take. Similarly, the applicant, if dissatisfied with the outcome of the Housing Appeals Committee, can file an appeal in a court of appropriate jurisdiction and can litigate the case in court if the applicant so chooses. Only once there is a final decision, meaning the last agency, the last court has spoken or there have been no further appeals, appeal periods have passed, will then, and I'll address this, I'll point you to it in the stipulation, will the next steps then occur. And really, it's going to be one of two things. It's either going to be that the Housing Appeals Committee and the courts determine that this board does have that authority, notwithstanding its determination that it doesn't, in which case the matter will come back and we'll pick things up where we left off or we're leaving off. Or alternatively, if the Housing Appeals Committee and/or the courts determine that you don't have the authority, much as you think you don't have the authority, well then the applicant will have two choices. They can simply withdraw its application, or it can amend the application if it believes it can amend the application to somehow provide water or sewer service, septic or common water source, well water. It's, to date, it's made representations that that would render the project, you know, uneconomic, financially infeasible. So the presumption, based upon the representations made thus far, is that the likely outcome would be a withdrawal of the application. But there is a reservation to the applicant. If the applicant believes it can amend its application and not require water or sewer service, well then, once again, it would come back to the board, but the board would still have an opportunity to pick up where it left off and review the revised plans, any aspects of the project that hasn't reviewed thus far, utilizing peer review consultants and so forth. So you're not losing anything you would otherwise have if you continued this process on from today, or simply hitting the pause button to say it, you know, informally, and going to the Housing Appeals Committee and beyond, if necessary, to get a determination on these issues. So I'll pass these, this draft stipulation along, and then I'll sort of walk you through it very quickly. It's two and a half pages, really summarizes much of what I've, what I've just stated. Okay. So I'll just walk through each of the paragraphs and describe them for you. Many of them are self-explanatory. This is structured like many contracts you may have seen before. It has a series of whereas clauses, which generally just provide background for the agreement that is ultimately going to be made. So on the first page, the first paragraph, the first whereas clause indicates that application has been made by Pondview Commons to construct a 200-unit multifamily rental project known as Pondview Commons. Second paragraph states that the zoning board of appeals is the permitting authority under Chapter 40B. Third paragraph says that the applicant submitted its application on August 18th, 2022. Fourth paragraph says that the application requests various waivers, including the two waivers that are then quoted as lowercase roman numeral one and lowercase roman numeral two. And these are direct quotes from the application form, from the waiver list that was a part of the application package submitted by Attorney Bornstein on behalf of his client. And you can see that the first request is for a waiver of any approval required for expansion of the sewer service area. And the second request is similarly a waiver from any approval that would be required for expansion of the Lunenburg Water District to allow for water service to the site. The fifth paragraph, if the whereas clause, says that the board has noticed, advertised, and convened a public hearing, which commenced on September 14th, and has been continued from time to time. The last whereas clause on the first page says that during this public hearing process, the parties exchanged, the applicant and through council, and the board through council, exchanged correspondence with regard to this, these water and sewer issues. And turning to the second page, the first full whereas clause on the second page says that the applicant is seeking a final determination as to the authority of the board to grant the sewer and water extensions, as explained by expanding the district and the sewer service area before it proceeds with the process, including the funding of additional peer reviews. Second whereas clause on the second page says that the board can't proceed with this process without completing those peer reviews, because it can't fully vet the project, and therefore, it too believes that going to the Housing Appeals Committee or beyond would be in its best interest to get a definitive answer on the water and sewer issues. And then we begin with, after the now there for clause, we begin with the five paragraphs, I think it's five paragraphs, six paragraphs, of the actual stipulation. So I'll just read them. Paragraph one, so as to adjudicate the sewer and water issues before the Housing Appeals Committee and thereafter, if either party so elects before courts of competent jurisdiction, the board has voted, or will immediately hereafter vote, to deny the waivers that were just quoted above in the fourth clause, on the basis that the board lacks the authority to extend sewer and water service to the site. So that's the first paragraph. Paragraph two says that the parties will cooperate in advancing the sewer and water issues to the Housing Appeals Committee, says the party shall have a full and fair opportunity to litigate these issues before the Housing Appeals Committee and beyond, if either party so chooses. And here's the key language, exhausting all appellate rights as either party may choose until a final adjudication of the issues is achieved. Just to be very clear that that's what either party is permitted to do. Paragraph three, and this is something that we've discussed at prior sessions of the public hearing, that effective as of the date of signing of this stipulation and throughout the duration of the litigation that we just referred to, before the Housing Appeals Committee or before the courts, proceedings before the board are stayed, as is the board's 180-day deadline to complete its public hearing on the application pursuant to the regulations. It says that within stipulation shall constitute written consent of the applicant to an extension of the 180-day deadline. And that's essentially quoted language directly from the regulation that says you have to obtain written consent to extend that deadline. So by virtue of this being signed by the applicant, this will function as written consent. And I say that a copy will be filed in the town clerk's office. I expressly say, just to avoid any doubt, the applicant shall not claim constructive approval of a comprehensive permit for the project while the processes contemplated above are underway. So there's no argument that there can't be a constructive grant. The public hearing on the application cannot and need not be continued indefinitely pending the outcome of the litigation, but instead shall be renoticed. So this is something that we've not discussed before. I think I discussed it briefly either with Lisa or with the chairman. You know, how do we go about continuing the public hearing? Because you generally have to continue from time to time to a date, time, and place certain. How do we know what that date, time, and place certain is going to be? Because we don't know how long this litigation process is going to take. And so, and we don't know if it'll ultimately ever be coming back to you, depending upon the outcome of the litigation. So it seemed to make sense to simply stay these proceedings, but not identify a date, time, or location for the continued public hearing. What that inevitably means is that if the matter does come back to you, it needs to be renoticed, because you have to go through the same process you went through originally, putting it in a newspaper of general circulation each of two successive weeks, sending notice to a butters. There's a, you know, nominal cost associated with all of that in the big scheme of things that's not significant. That's a cost that is borne by the applicant. And so it may seem to make sense here that we wouldn't continue these proceedings, not knowing when we'd be continuing them too. So that was my suggestion. The applicant had no objection to it. Paragraph four and paragraph five address the two scenarios that I spoke about just a few moments ago. So paragraph four says, if a final adjudication of the sewer and water issues give the board the authority to extend sewer and water service, effectively reversing the vote that the board is going to take tonight, stating that it doesn't have the authority to do that, then the public hearing before the board will resume. And this is what I've been able to negotiate with the applicant. The applicant shall provide the board with no fewer than 90 days to complete its review of the project. We were concerned that it's taken some time to negotiate the stipulation. It's taken some time to go back and forth since the board requested before the holidays for funds to be provided for an engineering peer review. You've lost time in the interim. We don't want to hit the pause button today, really and truly, because your deadline, your 180-day deadline to act on this application runs on March 13th. Today is February 8th. That's less than five weeks away. We wouldn't want you to be resuming this process in three months, six months, a year, two years, and only have five weeks to finish up the process, having to conduct an engineering peer review and review water and sewer if ultimately the courts have determined that you have the authority and even the obligation to take action on behalf of the town meeting and the district voters. So 90 days, you're provided minimally. And then there's a caveat here. It says, so long as there's reasonable funding being provided for peer reviews by the applicant, and also premised on the applicant's timely submittal of additional information. So, you know, we don't want the 90-day clock to start, and then the applicant's as well. I now have to prepare those detailed sewer plans that I have not been preparing, but that I will now prepare. Same thing for water. It's going to take me six weeks to do that, so that's six weeks of your 90 days that are being eaten up. That's not, that's not how this, this works. So it's 90 days minimally, premised on the fact that the applicant is able to submit the additional information the board needs to make its decision in a timely manner. Paragraph five talks about the opposite outcome. The opposite outcome being that the board's determination that it has no authority to act on behalf of water district voters or town meetinggoers with regard to water or sewer. If that decision is affirmed by the HAC or by the courts, and this is the either/or that I discussed a moment ago, either the applicant can withdraw the application altogether, or the applicant can amend its application to show how it's going to provide water and some form of sewage disposal at the site. And in that instance, you'll have slightly longer, 120 days, again, premised on the fact that there's going to be some amendment to the plans different than what you've already seen. And these are, again, minimums, not maximums. And then paragraph six is just a paragraph I added in, kind of a belt and suspenders thing, just to say that nothing in this stipulation is intended to deny or divest either party of its statutory, regulatory, or other rights to appeal or defend the merits of the project. In other words, we're just going to the HAC to, or beyond, to address the water and sewer issues. And by doing that, by pausing these proceedings, you're not forfeiting, the applicant isn't forfeiting the opportunity to present and review all other aspects of the project and ultimately render a decision on the project as a whole after you've had that opportunity to review the project on the merits. So that's the essence of the stipulation. It does reference, and this is the second document that we'll go over in a moment, it references a vote. I prepared a sort of a mini decision, not as comprehensive as a traditional decision, but one that provides a basis for why the board is reaching the conclusion that it has no authority. And we'll review that in a moment. But the stipulation itself, we've just covered it, is something that you would sign, it's something that the applicant would sign. I've got signature lines for council as well, so there's no question that both parties are represented by council, who have reviewed this on their respective behaves. And, and once this happens, we would simply proceed before the HAC and see what the HAC has to say. With that, I'll take a breath and turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, and see if anybody has any questions on the stipulation.
Okay. Does any board members have any questions?
Just one question. What do you envision as the nature of the proceedings before the HAC? Would it be lawyers-only appearing, or would it be representatives from the ZBA, the water district, the sewer commission? What do you envision as the way the proceedings would come to pass?
Sure. So the Housing Appeals Committee is an administrative agency. There are many of them in Massachusetts with different areas of jurisdiction to which decisions of municipalities are often appealed. Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, appellate tax board, Housing Appeals Committee, these are all agencies, and they all function in a similar fashion, where you have a decision-maker or sometimes a board of decision-makers, in a process that has become more and more reliant on the papers and less and less reliant upon live testimony. So what happens in traditional Housing Appeals Committee proceedings, if this were a full decision of the board that was a denial of a comprehensive permit, and it were appealed by an applicant to the Housing Appeals Committee, the Housing Appeals Committee would have an initial conference with representatives of the party, certainly a representative of the ZBA or a representative on behalf of the town, since when a case is litigated, it's ultimately the select board is the chief executive official that manages the litigation. Certainly, those representatives would be welcome to attend, and sometimes do attend, although I would say not in a majority of cases, in a majority of cases that simply counsel for the municipality. And similarly, counsel for the applicant, and sometimes the applicant, him or herself, will attend as well. An initial conference at which the presiding officer will determine the course of the proceeding. And usually what that course of the proceeding is, is the filing of what's referred to as prefiled testimony, effectively testimony in the form of an affidavit from any witness that a party wishes to introduce. So if we were debating issues of economics in the context of an HAC appeal, there would be affidavits from financial consultants, probably one representing the applicant, saying this, this project, this denial or this conditional approval renders the project uneconomic, and then the town's consultant saying, no, it doesn't, and here's why. If we were debating issues of local needs, you know, good planning practices or concerns with regard to sufficiency of sewer system capacity, you would have consultants with that expertise that would give testimony. And then when, when the trial is conducted, they don't call it that, they call it a hearing, but it functions like a trial, there's no need for the witnesses to give direct testimony because they've already done so in writing. So really, the trial, the hearing, is an opportunity for the attorneys to cross-examine the witnesses based upon their prefiled written testimony. I don't know if that exact process will be filed here, because we're, to some extent, inventing this process as we go. As we discussed before, there are some references in the Housing Appeals Committee, the Chapter 40B regulations, to interlocutory appeal, but not in this context. This is really a legal issue we're bringing to the Housing Appeals Committee. So the Housing Appeals Committee may provide an opportunity for, let's say, the water district or the sewer commission to make a filing, if it so chooses, as an interested party, because of course, we're dealing with water and sewer issues. But ultimately, I think this is probably a case that will be resolved on the papers, meaning legal arguments presented by council representing the zoning board of appeals, council representing the applicant, and as I said, potentially counsel for the sewer commissioner for the water district if that invitation is extended by the Housing Appeals Committee. I don't think it's going to be an extended proceeding. I say that relatively speaking. Litigation is not known to be quick in Massachusetts, so a quick proceeding at the HAC could be six months, could be a year, could be 18 months. It's hard to say. But that's how I suspect it's going to go, but I don't know with certainty because I haven't done this sort of an appeal before in this context. Although I've done a fair amount of work at the Housing Appeals Committee, so I'm familiar with the other processes generally.
Thank you. Okay. I will, I didn't announce this before, I will have a public comment period as well. Do you want some more time? Should I do a public now?
If the public has questions, you can open it up now in the stipulation, sure.
I think I'll do that. I'm going to open it up to the public now, so if anybody has any questions or comments they'd like to make. None? Uh, David? And would you check on Zoom to see if there's any?
Yes, yep, I don't see any hands up at this point, but I would encourage people to unmute and say something, just since we've had some rough internet starts tonight.
Mr. Chairman, counsel and member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Dave Rogers. I live at 82 Highland Street in Lunenburg. For the record, I would, I would like someone to tell me how we got to this particular stage in this process. It was my understanding that the applicant, so-called, wanted to put a stay on the proceedings because I heard that he didn't want to spend any more money in his process of completing the application until certain safeguards were put in place. Is, is that correct?
Do you want to answer that, or do you want me?
I can certainly answer it, Mr. Chairman, from my perspective, in terms of the dealings and conversations I've had with the applicant's counsel. So that's, that's correct to an extent. So what occurred was, the applicant had initially stated sometime in the late November, early December timeframe, and board members, board members will remember this, that it was willing to provide funding for both a traffic peer review and an engineering peer review. Subsequently, after not providing the additional funding for the engineering review, it advised the board that it first wanted a definitive answer on whether the board was of the opinion that the board had the authority to grant water and sewer extensions for the project, because otherwise, the project was infeasible, and from the applicant's perspective, it made no sense to review the engineering of a project that couldn't be built because the board wouldn't allow for water and sewer extensions to that project. I then discussed with the board at a subsequent meeting, the reality that that stance by the applicant also places the board in a difficult position. Because while the board could state, and I believe you'd be within your authority to say so, and it says this in the stipulation, that you were not going to render a decision on water and sewer at this stage in the proceeding, because you don't have to vote those waivers until you're prepared to vote the whole decision, that you had been advised by the applicant that it wouldn't provide funding for peer review of engineering. And without an engineering review, I don't know how the board proceeds to approve or deny the project. So you'd have to deny it effectively for lack of information, because you hadn't been provided funding for peer review, you hadn't had an opportunity to review the engineering, let alone particulars of water and sewer, because you hadn't received plans to that effect. And that there's a risk associated with that sort of a denial for lack of information, that if that were then appealed to the Housing Appeals Committee, the Housing Appeals Committee may not, if it ultimately sides with the applicant, may not send it back to the board to give the board a second bite at the apple. So as a result of that conversation, and the conversation between the applicant and its counsel, and what was then communicated to the board, I had discussions outside of the public meeting with Attorney Bornstein, and we discussed this possibility of a stipulation that could be mutually beneficial from his perspective, from my perspective, to both the private applicant and the board, in preserving your respective rights with regard to the project. And that proposal was presented to the board, I want to say after the, I think it was after the holidays, really early January, maybe late December. And that gave rise to the board authorizing me to draft the documentation that you're reviewing tonight.
Thank you. Could you explain to me what constitutes a completed application?
So the, through you, Mr. Chairman. So the zoning board of appeals have, has rules and regulations for, specific to comprehensive permits. The comprehensive permit rules and regulations specify the components of a complete application. Those rules and regulations largely mimic the requirements of the state regulations, 760 CMR 56, relative to Chapter 40B comprehensive permit projects. But they also provide for a waiver mechanism, as is sort of the hallmark of a 40B proposal. And so what we often see, and it's not unique to Lunenburg, is an applicant that submits all or substantially all, or maybe not even substantially all, of the materials that would otherwise constitute a complete application, but includes with that waiver requests from certain provisions. An example in this instance would be, the application fee was not paid in full, as we debated over a couple of sessions of the public hearing at the time the application was made. However, there was a waiver request that was submitted at that time, seeking a waiver from payment of the full application fee, which the board took up at a subsequent meeting. So the specific requirements, I can't recite them, chapter and verse, they're in the rules and regulations. There is a list of them, everything from concept plans to building tabulation, a copy of the application to the subsidizing agency. Again, there's a lengthy list, and those items would typically constitute a complete application.
From my perspective, sitting out in the audience and listening to what's transpired thus far, it's apparent to me that the applicant has not submitted a completed application. So how then, if that's the case, and if my premise is correct, how then can a definitive position be looked upon by anybody? And his willing, his unwillingness to do this, to me, is not in keeping with the process that was intended. You make an application, and you follow it through. So I think it's important that the record show that it's not anybody other than the applicant that wanted to stop this and change the rule. And his unwillingness to do this, to me, is not in keeping with the process that was intended. You make an application and you follow it through. So I think it's important that the record show that it's not anybody other than the applicant that wanted to stop this and change the rules, so-called, and I'm not sure that that's in keeping with the definition of a completed application. Okay? I understand all of the testimony that's been given in these hearings, and that will take place, the recanting of that will take place, I'm sure, before the appropriate parties. Okay? But from my perspective, sitting in the audience, I think that this is a very critical part of the equation, that the applicant has not fulfilled his obligation to pay fees, to get all the paperwork that's necessary, and in essence, as I have said, has not prepared a completed application. So it's difficult to conduct business if you don't have a complete application. I hope that this particular facet of the proceedings can be worked out, but I don't want to see in any manner, shape, or form that this whole process is putting the town of Lunenburg on the defense because of his inability to move forward. Which brings me to the next question I have is, where are they? Where are the applicants? I don't understand why they're supposed to be presenting an application for what they're supposed to be doing, and nobody's here to do this. So I think that's problematic insofar as I'm concerned, because you can't ask them any questions, and it just seems that the rules for this operation have changed drastically, and it's not very settling insofar as I'm concerned. So those are my initial concerns, and I'd just like to make sure that the real crux of this whole procedure is taken care of and it's done by the book, because I think that that's really what the process should be. Thank you for your time.
Okay, David, I, I'll let the attorney, but David, just so you know, just because it's sitting here, this is the application. This is from, now, I think it's complete by what the state says, because HAC already reviewed this and approved their 40B. Am I correct? Not approved it?
No, so, Mr. Chairman, so the Housing Appeals Committee has not reviewed an application, nor would it. No, and they haven't reviewed it either. So the application gets submitted to a subsidizing agency first. Mass Housing Finance Agency, which is a separate entity from the Housing Appeals Committee, is the project subsidy for the project. So the comprehensive permit process is effectively a three-part process for an applicant. They first make application to a project subsidy like Mass Housing to get what's called a project eligibility letter, a determination that this project would be eligible for the issuance of a comprehensive permit. That application was made back in 2021. It took almost a year for the Mass Housing to issue that project eligibility letter over the town's objection. It then, the applicant then makes an application to the zoning board of appeals for the comprehensive permit, and if it obtains the permit, there's then a regulatory process on the backend that is the third part of the three-step process. So that application package you see there was the application made to the zoning board. A substantial portion of that is the application package that was submitted to Mass Housing for the issuance of the project eligibility letter. But in addition to what was submitted to Mass Housing, that package includes information for the ZBA, like a list of proposed waivers, it includes a copy of the project eligibility letter and other data, above and beyond what would have been submitted to the subsidizing agency.
If I could, Mr. Chairman. Let's see if we can't quantify this for my edification. And the scope of things, is this application 100% complete?
So I'm going to, it's a difficult question to answer, because I think what you're looking for is, if you walk through the requirements and the regulations side by side with the application package, is every item in the regulations included in the application package? And I think the answer to that question is probably no. However, as I stated before, an applicant is free to seek waivers from certain requirements, including the requirement that it submit X, Y, or Z. And there are waiver requests that certain items not be provided. Again, the example I gave was, the most obvious deficiency in the application was when it was submitted, is that it didn't include the full application fee that would have been required under the regulations. But the regulations give the applicant the ability to seek a waiver of that fee, and there was a waiver request submitted with the application package, which under 40B rules is sufficient. The board then has the ability to grant or deny the waiver, as you heard a few meetings back, the board didn't grant the waiver wholesale, but it did grant a partial waiver, requiring a certain portion of the otherwise applicable fee to be paid, and that portion of the applicable fee was subsequently paid to the town. So it, Chapter 40B, reality is, it's unlike anything you're used to in the context of municipal zoning ordinances and bylaws, where it says what it says, you've got to do what it says, and if you don't, we deny you. Chapter 40B is a compilation of local requirements, state requirements, and the flexibility or the complication that this concept of a waiver adds to the equation.
Am I correct when I ask, is the integral part of the application, the submission of projected plans and specifications for the 40B application?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So you are correct, except that how you define plans, how I define plans, how the chairman defines plans, and how the applicant defines plans may all be different. So what's envisioned under Chapter 40B are effectively concept plans, plans that provide the board with sufficient enough information in the context of a permitting process to determine whether the boxes are checked, whether this project is consistent with local needs, whether this project fulfills the state requirements, the local rules and regulations, such that the issuance of a comprehensive permit can be justified. Those are going to be very different, for example, than construction detail plans that would be submitted, for example, prior to the issuance of a building permit. Those are going to be far more complex, far more detailed plans than what would get submitted as part of this process.
Okay. I think you get my gist of what I'm driving at here, okay? And I don't want to take up any more of your time, but it's just, to me, it's just mind-boggling that he doesn't want to spend any more money to get plans. He doesn't want to do this. He wants a waiver of this, but it's not complete. So, I mean, it's just, it's counter to what my understanding of common sense is, pure principle. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Would anyone else like to speak? Is there anybody on Zoom with hands raised?
Nope.
Okay. And I will cut off public discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question, and that is regarding the 90 days. I feel that that's, you know, wasn't, that I would look at it as, it should be at least 120 days on both sides, because even if we want to look at this and say, okay, we did have the authority, or we did have the ability to review, there was no plans to review. So the fact that we, the applicant forced us to deliberate for what I would say is 30 days over this issue, without having anything to look at, I would feel that we should have at least the 120 days, you know, that I would want to have that extra time in writing, because we are going to need it, even if we would deny.
Okay, thank you. Now, you have that written in there, is the 90 day on the first part.
So I do. I mean, what I was able to negotiate with the applicant was a 90-day period. From my perspective, and I'm not the board, I'm not a member of the board, so it's your decision as to what you deem appropriate, the state regulations give a board 180 days start to finish to review a comprehensive permit application of any sort, whether it's a four-unit comprehensive permit, or it's a 204-unit comprehensive permit. The board has 180 days to open and close its public hearing. You opened this public hearing in the fall. We had several substantive sessions when we discussed waivers, we discussed, obviously, water and sewer at length, we conducted a full traffic peer review. The sort of work that's been undertaken already is the sort of work that would typically be undertaken within the first 90 days, half the allotted time for the review of a comprehensive permit. So to me, saying we need 90 days, when, you know, if you were up against it, if you had been provided with the monies that you had asked for in December, you likely would have started reviewing engineering in first of the year, early January, and you would have had a March 13 deadline, you would have had 60 days or 75 days. 90 seemed to me to be more than you probably would have had otherwise. With that said, if the board believes it needs more, the board believes it needs more, and I can attempt to negotiate that, but that means we don't have a stipulation to sign tonight. I will say with regard to plans, I don't want, I don't want the record to reflect something that's not entirely accurate. So, you know, we have, I'm looking at the application package, I have an electronic version of it, it's 228 pages. So you didn't get a 10-page submittal or a 20-page submittal, you got a fairly comprehensive submittal, as you should, it's a comprehensive permit, but that submittal included, you know, everything from evidence of site control to, you know, evidence of financial feasibility, it included site plans, not sufficient enough site plans, for example, to satisfy an engineer to do a full engineering review, and certainly not sufficient enough site plans to show the specifics of water and sewer. The applicant, I guess, was expecting that the board would simply approve water and sewer extensions without seeing detailed plans of how the water and sewer extensions were going to occur. I don't think that that's reasonable, and I think that if this comes back to the board after an adjudication of those issues, and you do have to review water and sewer, it would be fair for you to expect additional detail. But you do have plans, I mean, I'm looking at them, there were plans submitted with the application, they just were not necessarily as detailed as the board would have liked or expected.
So just as a aside, I look, just as a comment, it sounds to me like we should have looked at this in reverse. In other words, should have looked at everything else and left water and sewer for last. Because that would have given us a chance to review, to have asked for everything else first, and then, you know, then we would have taken up the issue of water and sewer. Would that have made sense?
So I don't necessarily agree with that. In fact, if I recall, I think, you know, I was a champion of speaking of the water and sewer issues early on, because I had a fear that if you required those monies to be spent on the premise that, you know, you were not addressing water and sewer, it was the elephant in the room, from the opening of the public hearing, we all knew that the project required water and sewer, there were discussions, I look back and preparing these materials, that correspondents who received it at the opening of the public hearing, saying, the estimate says that the costs for extensions of water and sewer are way off, not to mention that it's infeasible, it can't be done legally, it can't be done practically. So I had a fear that if those weren't addressed, first of all, I think the applicant would have asked for them to be addressed earlier than the end of the proceeding, if they weren't addressed until the end, and the applicant had spent money hand over fist on other sorts of reviews, and then you denied it based on water and sewer, not having made known to the applicant that you had issues with water and sewer from the very start, I had a concern about how that would be reflected in further proceedings, and whether there would be requests for the applicant for costs and expenses of the money it expended in anticipation of approval of a project, when you knew all along that you were going to deny it based upon lack of authority to extend water and sewer. So I raised the issue early, you made your position known, and then the applicant itself, through counsel, agreed to provide funding for traffic, and we completed a traffic review, and we had a traffic review meeting, and then agreed to provide money for engineering, and I thought we were going down the path of, okay, we made the water and sewer issues known, we discussed it, we've reviewed, or we're going to review other aspects of the project, and then we'll come full circle to water and sewer, until the applicant had a change of heart and said, no, we're not going to provide that money for engineering after all, because we want a definitive answer on water and sewer. So I don't know that there was an easier way, or a best way for this process to play out, it's just a, it's a complex project, because the applicant is asking for water and sewer on a site that doesn't have access today to water and sewer. And so the board is asking, is being asked to do something that, you know, most boards aren't asked to do. I've been involved in many, many Chapter 40B developments where zoning boards of appeals are asked to issue water connection permits, or sewer connection permits, to sites that already have water and sewer on the roadway immediately adjacent to them. And I think that the law is clear in that regard, that generally speaking, it is the obligation of the board to act on behalf of water and sewer commissions or districts in granting those permits. This is different. This isn't just a permit to connect, it's an extension several miles to connect to a site that is far outside of the sewer service area and the very water district itself.
Thank you. And that's a question, David. Yeah, that's, okay. So we'll cut off public discussion.
So the question now, Mr. Chairman, is, do you want to vote the stipulation, or do you want to review the actual vote document, the quasi or mini decision that I prepared on the issues of water and sewer first?
Mr. Chairman, I still have a quick question. So on what Dave said, I mean, what's the likelihood that the applicant's counsel is going to say no, and, you know, to the additional 30 days? Are we going to be back in the same spot we were two weeks ago, or two weeks from now? I suspect that if you negotiated this in good faith, I'm sure you have, as the council, other counsel has, I don't have an issue with it, but I suspect that if we go back and ask for another 30 days, it's going to take us another month to get to where we are today.
Right. So I suppose the board has two options. The board can state effectively what you just said, which is, you know, is the applicant going to, what's the saying, throw the baby out with the bathwater here? So just simply say, never mind, to this whole negotiated resolution, because the board's asking for 30 more days on the tail end of this process. So you could simply say, we're going to vote this tonight, but we're going to vote it with 120 days in either instance. And I'll go back to Attorney Bornstein with that, and if he says okay, then we've got a deal, and if he says no, then I got to come back to you again in a couple of weeks, and I've got to say no, he said no to 120, it has to be 90, we've lost a couple of weeks in the interim. That's option one. Option two is, you say, no, 90 is enough, and you just vote this as is, and I already have Attorney Bornstein sign off on this version, so we know we have a deal tonight. Those are the two options. I leave it to the board's discretion as to in which direction you want to go.
And with the 90 days, that's a minimum, you said, and that can be extended at any time by an agreement between us and the builder.
Right.
Which does not preclude any decision by HAC either way.
Correct. So the intention here was, when an extension of the original 180 days is granted, the regulations say it has to be with the consent of the applicant. And so what that usually means, most applicants don't give open-ended consent, will extend it until you decide you're done, they usually give you a set period of time. And I've done this in other contexts, where we're coming up on the 180, and we're not going to quite make it, an applicant will say, I'll give you 30 more, I'll give you 60 more. So we were trying to negotiate, once we resumed proceedings, a minimum number. So we said, no fewer than 90 days, if it's coming right back to you, more or less in the form you see it today, no fewer than 120 days, if there's going to need to be amendments to it based on water and sewer. But you're right, that can further, that can absolutely be further extended with the consent of the applicant, so you don't have complete control over that extension. If you get 70 days into your 90 days, and you have more than 20 days of work to do.
My concern is, is that if it comes back to us as is, that there's no way 90 days is even close to enough time, is we've added several more peer reviews, we would have to review the sewer plans, we'd have to review the water plans, so you're adding several meetings just for those alone. So therefore, I would look at it the opposite way, that, I would look for at least 120, if not more, because I don't feel that we've ever received everything that we needed to properly review this project. I understand that the idea was, we took the care of the elephant in the room, however, I don't want to shortchange this board and make it so that we're sitting here pushing through proceedings, you know, doing midnight proceedings, just because we have to do this in 90 days. Because what stops the applicant from saying, no, no extension? So nothing here precludes the applicant from saying, I won't give you any more than 90 days, figure out how to get it done. And, you know, and to Dave's point, you know, when do we call it, when do we start the clock at 90 days? You know, the fact of the matter is, we would have to make sure that there is, all the plans are in place for everything, as well as the money is in place for everything. And now, I'm not sure if that says it in either And I'm not sure if that says it in either one of these documents, that says that the clock starts when money is entered, all the plans, you know, comprehensive plans are done, and everything like that, so that proper review could be done. So that's my concern, is that the applicant has kind of already shown that we're going to get the bare minimum each time we ask. And that's a big, huge fear. Having done this several times.
Also is stated, we can deny, for lack of the information. It's another reason to deny. If at the end, they don't give us the time and extend it, we can always, and they press us to vote on that night, we can always add that in, say it was everything else, the traffic, the safety, whatever you want to do, plus you could add, in lack of information on these subjects.
Okay, I understand.
I would let town council address that.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know that I have much more to add. I mean, this is really a question of discretion for the board. I negotiated these deadlines, because I negotiated them in the context of the number of days that the board has under the regulations anyway. 180 days is what the regulations provide for. This process is not starting afresh, this process started back in September. If you had to complete the review, if the applicant had provided the engineering funds, and we hadn't gone down this path of a stipulation addressing water and sewer, because the applicant refused the engineering funds, you would have received those funds before the holidays, you would have been waiting on an engineering review, and you would have started that engineering review sometime around, or probably after the first of the year, and you still would have had a deadline of March 13th. And so you would have had about 60 or 70 days to complete the review. 90 seemed like you were getting more than what you would have had otherwise. I'm not saying it's enough, I understand the history here, I understand the concerns, I'm not downplaying any of those concerns. Unfortunately, you know, what the state regulations, it's been a critique of these regulations since the 180-day deadline was adopted back in 2010, I think it was, when they recodified the Chapter 40B regulations. Prior to that, there was no 180-day deadline. They added a deadline, and the critique has been that it's too short a period of time to review more complex projects, that six months is just not enough. And unfortunately, the state has not been all that receptive to that complaint, and they've said, schedule special meetings, have those midnight sessions, and do what you need to do to get it done. But if you want more than 90, again, I defer to the board, we can put it in there tonight and see if the applicant will accept it after the fact. That's fine by me.
So I'll say, can we just, you know, I'll look at that, and we can talk about it afterward. Do you want to move on to the next document?
Sure. Would you like me to do that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Okay. So this other document you have is on town letterhead, this is a, I've entitled it a certificate of partial vote for a comprehensive permit. I want it to be very clear that it's not a full vote. But what I attempted to do here is provide some background. This has also been sent to the applicant, I sent it earlier today, just to allow the applicant to review it. Attorney Bornstein's response is that he presumed that we weren't looking for his input on this document, and he obviously disagrees with what's in here, but it's the board's vote, and he did state in his email that he believed it was generally consistent with what the board has said to date. So I'll just review it quickly with the board. The first page, and the second page, the first two pages of the document, after identifying the applicant and the owner and the locus, is just the background. So Page 1 talks about much of what I already stated in the stipulation, the date of submittal of the application, the fact that the town has fewer than 10% affordability, such that it's subject to 40B projects, the public hearing was opened and continued to several dates. Beginning in the bottom of Page 1, it says that during these sessions of the public hearing, there were extensive discussions about these extensions of sewer and water services to the property and to the project site. It quotes the two waivers that were previously quoted in the stipulation that had been requested by the applicant. And then this section is a little different than what's in the stipulation, because it's not something being stipulated to, but it's what the board is stating. It says, "The board received and/or solicited, considered, and deliberated on comments by and advice from the applicant's attorney, from town council, from the town sewer commission, from the Lunenburg Water District, and from the Water District's council, with respect to the authority of the board to authorize the extension of water and sewer services as requested by the applicant." And then it says, "The following correspondence was accepted by the board," and it lists lowercase Roman numeral 1 through 11, which are the various letters correspondences you've received. Essentially, a couple of letters from me, a couple of letters from the applicant's counsel, several communications from the sewer commission, and communications from both the Water District back early on in the public hearing process, and then, more recently, at your last meeting, from the Water District's attorney. It then says, it then mimics what's in the stipulation at the bottom of Page 2, that there was this impasse between the applicant and the board concerning how these issues got addressed, and the stipulation was discussed and entered into. And then, beginning on Page 3, and on to Page 4, really the entirety of the substantive decision, are your votes. And so there's two of them. There's a vote on waiver number 2, which was the waiver to allow for sewer service, and there's a vote on waiver number 3, which was the waiver requesting water service. So with respect to waiver 2, it says that the board votes to deny the waiver, and there's some blanks there for who makes the motion, and the second, and what the ultimate quantum of vote is. And then it says, "As grounds for and in support of its denial of the above waiver, the board states that it is without the authority, both generally and within the context of the Comprehensive Permit Act and regulations, to extend or expand the boundaries of the town sewer service area to include the locus and the project site." And then there's a blurb there that follows, talking about the Act, Chapter 185 of the Acts of 2010, which created the sewer service area, and it quotes the provisions of that Act, stating that the only way to expand the sewer service area is with the vote of town meeting, and then goes on to say that the board concludes that, just as the sewer commission itself couldn't expand the boundaries, the board lacks the authority to do that as well, it can't effectively act on behalf of town meeting voters. I added an additional sentence here, or a couple of sentences, at the request of one of you at your last meeting, where you asked about whether I was going to reference in this the IMAs, and the obligation to contract with the cities of Fitchburg and Lemonster. So it says here, "The board also concludes that, separate from the foregoing, it lacks the authority to alter, amend, or renegotiate existing intermunicipal agreements with the cities of Fitchburg and Lemonster, or either of them, as would be necessary to accommodate extension of the sewer system to serve the project. Such contractual authority is vested in the town's select board only." So that's a separate basis. And then, last sentence here, is that the board incorporates, as justification for its denial, the various correspondences that address sewer that I cited on the preceding page. And then for water, it effectively follows the same format. It says that, again, "As grounds for and in support of its denial of the waiver, the board states that it's without the authority, both generally and within the context of the Comprehensive Permit Act and the regulations, to extend or expand the boundaries of the Lunenburg Water District to include the locus and the project site." And then it quotes from the Lunenburg Water District's enabling legislation from back in 1939, stating that the district can only be expanded by petition to and vote of the district voters at a meeting. And then it also includes a sentence there that says, "In fact, the applicant went to the Water District, and it convened a special meeting back in January of 2021, and it rejected a proposal to expand the district boundaries to include this very site." And then, again, same format, incorporates by reference the previous correspondence on the prior pages relative to water. So, again, this is just a form of decision that is meant to memorialize what we talked about at your last meeting, there's a signature line on the last page, this would get filed with the town clerk, it would get attached to the stipulation, and this is effectively the decision that would be reviewed by the Housing Appeals Committee. It probably could have been done a bit more simply, but I wanted to be sure that if we're going to the Housing Appeals Committee, it understands the basis for the board's decision, and it's not a one-liner, that you just don't have any authority. So I put something a bit more comprehensive together that reflects the discussions we've had so far.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Back to the board. Make a motion.
I guess I would suggest that if there are any questions, I can answer them, whether they're from the public or from the board, on the decision, and then after that, I can guide you through the motions on each of the documents.
Okay. So any more questions from the board? Any more questions from the public? Seeing none? Seeing none? I guess I have to ask, how do we feel on the way this is written now?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have no issue with the stipulation or the certificate of partial vote. I know Dave is concerned about the 90 days or 120 days. I think I've been on the record that I believe that the applicant has held this board hostage when it comes to the engineering, and, you know, the fact that he didn't want to fund anything until we had a straw vote on the water and sewer. I think that this puts that to bed, and I think we'll keep his feet to the fire on the 90 days. You know, if they do come back and say that we have the authority to do the water and the sewer, I'm comfortable with the 90 days, because I think if we have to be here until midnight, so will they.
Correct. If we have to meet every week, we will.
That's what I think. And I think, you know, this board, it's not the first 40B that we've had before us, we've worked through those, and so I'm comfortable with the 90 days and what council has written up for us tonight.
Thank you.
And I'm prepared to make a motion.
Now, I'll just ask if there's any more comments before. No more comments from the board? Okay, then I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion with respect to waiver 2 above, that we deny said waiver on the sewer service. And I'd make a motion, and further that, with respect to waiver number 3, with respect to the water service, that we deny said waiver.
One at a time?
You want to do one at a time?
One at a time?
You can do them together, or one at a time, either way, if they're going to be made, as long as the same person moves and seconds them, that's fine.
I'll second both of them.
We have a motion to second. So I'm going to ask the Act member by member, so.
I vote to deny both.
Hans?
I vote to deny both.
David?
Vote to deny both.
Patrick?
Vote to deny both.
And I vote to deny both.
And so now you've voted the certificate of partial vote on the two waivers, so I will make amendments to Page, what is it, Page 4, 3, which includes the movement and the secondary, as well as the quantum of vote.
Oh, yeah, that's.
I have a clean version here for convenience, that doesn't have the draft watermark on it, so I can circulate this, you can do this after you close the meeting for actual signatures, and you can leave them with Lisa, and then when I make the revision, she can add your signature page, which is why I did it separately, on to the remainder of the decision, to get it filed. You also need to vote tonight the stipulation as well, and similarly, I have a clean version of that that can be signed tonight. So all I would need is, oh, you would need, Mr. Chairman, is a motion to sign the stipulation, either in the form it's presented, or with edits. I heard one person say they're okay with 90, but somebody else say 120, so if it's going to be adjusted, you would just need to incorporate that into your motion.
I don't think we're going to adjust it. Am I correct?
I don't think so. I don't think we need to.
Okay, so I would ask.
I'll make a motion that we vote to accept the stipulation and sign the page of the stipulation. That's three times.
Second?
I'll second that, Mr. Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Here, we have a motion to second.
Can we, a little quick discussion?
Yes.
Okay. So my, just because I do have to ask this, what would it be the penalty for us to ask for 120 versus 90? Does that stop, we still stop in the clock where it is, or seen as stopping the clock where it is? Or are we now seen as not in good faith, that we're actually looking at as we had something, and now we're going back and looking for more? What?
I've been having this 180 number in my head a long time, and trying to keep this moving.
I understand.
As you know, I'm very lary about stretching out two more weeks. You know, losing another 14 days.
Okay.
Because I don't have a crystal ball, I can't see what's going to happen. But, I mean, if you fail strongly, we can discuss it again.
I'm just voicing, you know, voicing my opinion from, you know, sitting here. So that's the only thing I look at. I just, I'm not, I don't, I haven't gotten the warm and fuzzy about negotiating, you know, we've been through several of these together, that I've been up here, and, you know, this is, this one's not feeling the same as some of the others have. And that's the only thing that I worry about, is there's too much.
I have to agree with Hans. It would be, you know, I'm not going to say, I can't speak for anybody, but.
Understand.
If we're stretching this, and we, you know, meet every week, or keep them here till midnight, whatever we do, you know, if we feel they're not going to approve it, not approve it, that it's going to approve an extension.
Okay.
But if we're going, if everybody's working, going, you know, working diligently at the 40B and the comprehensive permit, whatever comes back, whatever, they would be foolish to not extend it.
All right. That's, like I say, I just wanted to, you know, voice a thought, as they say. I think just based on experience with the applicant and the council, asking for another 30 days, it's going to take it longer than that to get what, you know.
Right.
I think, we've got to look at the trade-off.
The blow-by 30 days.
Is it a trade-off for 30 days versus not getting the sign and then pulling away from it? And then, you know, us having to be on the hook for March 13th, I just think that it's been negotiated, I think we should just, that's my personal opinion, I think we should move forward.
I agree with that.
And we can make up that 30 days, you know, over the time of the hearings.
Basically, amounts, if we stayed on our normal schedule, it amounts to hearings.
Right. No, I understand completely. I just, okay, just even if we, even if we met every week, I don't even, I don't personally think 120 is enough. We have the applicant who, you know, we were trying to, we were trying to get the engineering done before the holidays, so we could make progress, and we didn't even get that far, because it dragged it out, and basically said, I'm not paying anything. So that's why we're here.
Exactly.
All right. I'm with you guys, I just, just like I say.
We have a motion to second. So I'm going to call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. David?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And I.
Any comments from the public?
So we have two sheets to sign.
You're going to have, yes, two sheets.
Yes, I will circulate the votes.
Is there anything else before us?
No, we do have another hearing coming up at the end of the month.
22nd.
22nd, February, 7 o'clock.
Yep.
Do you have your paper, Lisa? You can just tell them what it is.
Oh, it's 406 Sunset Lane? Oh, you have it before you, yes. So that's going to be on February 22nd at 7:00 PM, the petition of David J. Chadwick and Nancy M. Malady, 406 Sunset Lane, seeking a special permit for dimensional variation to raise a portion of the existing deck and construct a new addition to the dwelling within a portion of the existing footprint. The overall footprint of the dwelling will be increased, so that will be our next meeting.
You just want signatures, right? Is this the one?
Yes.
Yeah. So can I, do we, do we need to be on film for this?
No.
All right, can I make a motion, adjourn?
You can.
I'll second that.
Motion adjourned, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.